Okay, Mayor, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. I call the May 12 City Council meeting to order. Mr. Daniels, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Next item, roll call. Councilmember Bruins is absent. Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
And Mayor Middleton?
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestream at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, May 16th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Okay, next item?
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval?
Move approval?
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Schaefer and who was it in chambers for the second?
Daniels. Brett?
We'll say it was Brett. I hear him talking. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins is absent. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye. Next item?
Next item, we have presentation number four, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May 15th through 21st, 2022 as National Public Works Week.
Mr. Miller, will you please lead us off on this one?
Certainly. I'd like to proclaim that this is National Public Works Week and read a little bit from the proclamation. Public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital to the sustainability and resiliency of our communities and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the residents and businesses of Citrus Heights. These infrastructure, facilities, and services are provided through the dedication and hard work of public works professionals who are operators, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government as well as within the private sector. They are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, parks, creeks, water supply, and water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. This year, 2022, marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored and promoted by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. American Public Works Association has selected "Ready and Resilient" as the theme for National Public Works Week in 2022, which exemplifies the hard work, working men and women who carry out these vital works as civil servants. Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. And we urge Citrus Heights civic leaders, businesses, citizens, and youth to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works for the growth, prosperity, and future of Citrus Heights. And hereby salute the city's dedicated public works professional. And it's signed by our mayor, Portia Middleton. And I'd like to invite Regina Cave to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It is my pleasure to accept this proclamation as the General Services Director here at the City of Citrus Heights, on behalf of all the hardworking staff here at the city and general services, as well as on behalf of the American Public Works Association. I am also the president of the Sacramento chapter of the American Public Works Association, and it is our mission and goal to not only promote and educate the public on what we do and to celebrate as well. And so with that, just a reminder, next Thursday, May 19th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., we will be celebrating over at Van Marren Park with a lot of heavy machinery and equipment that help to keep our streets and our services going here in Citrus Heights. And we will also have numerous vendors and partners, including Sunrise Parks and Recreation, SMUD, SAC County Personnel and HR, SAC Sewer District, and numerous other partners on hand to talk about all the opportunities and careers within public works in their vicinities and also to educate some of the students on some of these career opportunities as they venture off into the real world. So, thank you again. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May as Building Safety Month.
Mr. Miller, thank you again.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure. Okay, this is proclaiming Building Safety Month of May 2022. Our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, I have to throw in electricians too, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. These guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit group that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, work, and play. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action" is the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, and it encourages us to all raise our awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to our benefit. Each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting life and property. Now therefore, the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month. And accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month's activities. And it's signed by our mayor, Portia Middleton. And I'd like to invite our chief building official, Greg Anderson, up to accept a proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Greg Anderson, chief building official. I just want to thank you again, as always, for your undevoted support with Building Safety Month and the building department. I think it was covered in the proclamation, everything that building safety is about. There's a lot to it and more being added all the time. You've got energy, sustainability, structural. It just goes on and on. There's a lot more information if you want to look it up, and it's buildingsafetymonth.org. That's the ICC website that puts on this national campaign. And if you have any questions for us in the city, you're welcome to contact us. Our contact information is citrusheights.net in the building department. And with that, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll give Mr. Miller some time to get to his seat.
So our next presentation, presentation number six, is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 15th through 21st, 2022 as National Police Week.
Thank you. As Amy said, we are proclaiming May 15th through the 21st as National Police Week. And I'm going to read this proclamation and then invite the distinguished commander, Chris Frye, to come up and accept it. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas policing in the United States is a noble profession of tremendous responsibilities, perilous challenges, and great importance to American society, the actions of any one police professional in an incident can change lives and influence individuals in impactful ways. And whereas it is important our citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and the necessity for working together with them in maintaining law and order. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people, and now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim May 15th, 2022, to be National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the preceding week declared National Police Week in honor of all peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have served communities across the nation. And it's signed by the mayor, Portia Middleton.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As Mr. Daniels mentioned, my name is Chris Frye. I'm the operations commander with the police department, and I am both humbled and thankful to be here this evening. Humbled to have the opportunity to accept this proclamation on behalf of Chief Alex Turcot and the women and men of the Citrus Heights Police Department, and thankful for the council's ongoing and continued support for both the police department and with the public safety within our community. As you can imagine, the month of May is a solemn month for law enforcement professionals across this nation. It's the time of year when members of our law enforcement community pause to participate in memorial services throughout the country to honor the brave women and men who paid the ultimate sacrifice by laying down their lives while protecting their respective communities. It's also a time when we pay tribute to law enforcement professionals that were disabled while serving in the line of duty and by the grace of God, were not taken from us early. Though President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation in 1962 designating the 15th of May each year as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, there are several memorial ceremonies that are planned at local, state, and federal levels each year that typically begin during the last week of April and extend through the month of May. Within our region, the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial took place on Thursday, April 28th. On Monday, May 2nd, the California State Law Enforcement Memorial was held at the state Capitol. And on May 3rd, a memorial service was held at the California Highway Patrol Academy to honor the members of the CHP who lost their lives in the line of duty. Law enforcement is a true calling that is answered daily by people that are willing to face the dangers and perils awaiting them to serve a greater good. Being a law enforcement officer is sometimes a difficult and thankless job. The brave men and women of the Citrus Heights Police Department are the most dedicated and professional law enforcement officers that I have had the privilege to work with throughout my career. I would encourage everyone here this evening and members of our community that are participating remotely to take a moment this month to thank law enforcement officers, especially those with the CHPD, for their selfless and dedicated service to the communities that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Our next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Mr. Miller, if you please.
Yes, ma'am. Monday, I attended the regional transit meeting. And one of the major items on the agenda was the homeless safe parking program by the City of Sacramento. They asked to use 100 spaces at the Roseville Road Light Rail Station, and there's plenty of space in the back. But there was a few contentious items that we had to be ironed out over time. And one was that the RT was indemnified by the City of Sacramento for any kind of lawsuits or accidents that happen or if they burn something down. And also that there's a safe area that's posted around the light rail station. The transit's a little different than, say, the City of Citrus Heights where the Boise decision affects our homeless population. If we don't have the beds for them, we can't move them off public land. Well, it's different when you're running trains. It's a little more dangerous, and it's an essential service, and it's not subject to the Boise decision. So that was our biggest concern is keeping the system safe and secure for our riders. And we'll be watching that every month to make sure everything's going well. We also got a budget update. It's really good news. We hit 12.5% in reserve. That's the highest it's ever been. It's been about 10 years to get to that point, but it's made it so we don't have to use a line of credit to pay employees while we wait for the big checks to come in from the federal and the state government. And, you know, so we're not paying interest on a line of credit. And that's just, makes me very happy to get to that point with regional transit. Today, at the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting, we are advertising for a new executive director for STA and probably should have someone on board next month, if not maybe an interim appointment. Also got an update on the SAFSA or Sacramento Vehicle, Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority. And that will be Measure C on your June ballot. It seeks to extend the $1 per year on your car registration to over 10 years to pay for removing abandoned vehicles in our city, in the county, and other cities as well. It's a successful program, but it has expired. So we're asking people to consider voting for the dollar per year, keeping the dollar per year going. And I think it's a small price to pay to keep our streets looking good and getting abandoned vehicles off them. So I would urge you to vote yes on this, but that's your decision. And with that, that's all I have tonight. Portia?
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Not too much really. I just want to piggyback Commander Frye's remarks about taking the time to recognize law enforcement. It is a police week, but the day, Sunday, the 15th, is the actual Police Officer Memorial Day. And I would encourage you to scoop up your kids, head downtown to the Capitol, to the Peace Officer Memorial there, and let them see the names inscribed and things like that and give them an appreciation of the sacrifice that many law enforcement officers have made over the years. As a former deputy sheriff, I've been on duty when officers have been shot. I've been on duty when officers have been killed, and it's pretty remarkable. And it's something I think that we have become a little just anesthetized from. And I think it's important that you take the time to show that respect, show that appreciation, and especially make sure that your children understand the sacrifice that peace officers make. And it is downtown in front of the Capitol area, I believe, 10th Street. And it's a good experience, so I encourage you to do that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to recognize, number one, the resolution that Councilmember Steve Miller read about both public works and the building department. And certainly, most importantly, I think about our officers, and I pray that they stay safe all the time. We certainly don't want to add more officers to the memorial that we have going on. And so I take that part, that a great deal of respect for the job that they do every day. Like Commander Frye mentioned, that it's often a very thankless job. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that they're on the road here this day. On another note, you know, with COVID and me getting elected in November, I really haven't had much time to get acquainted with city staff. I had the pleasure, I know I have been through strategic planning before. And, but number one, the amount of preparation that went into the, prior to the strategic planning was absolutely remarkable. We got a tremendous amount of things accomplished and goals set. And more importantly, a pathway to reach those goals. So it was just a wonderful pleasure to get to know city staff much better, face to face. Again, my interaction with city staff has been pretty limited because of COVID. But I'm glad to see that we're all getting back together. And I just can't praise our city manager enough for the brilliant job he did preparing for this. It really paved the way for us accomplishing much of what we have ahead of us. I would encourage everyone to review the strategic planning process and the goals that are posted online. I shared it with a number of residents. And I'll be, it's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff there. And I'll be doling that out to the community a piece at a time so they have a chance to sort of grasp and have a good understanding of where we're going, where this community is headed, and what a positive, positive light the ashes brought to our community. Thanks, Mayor.
Wonderful. Chan, two weeks from me, end of April, beginning of May, went to Cap to Cap to go and talk to our lawmakers about what we need in the Sacramento region and why it's important. Councilmember Miller and I actually toured around some really awesome facilities, and it gave us some great ideas about what Sunrise Mall could be in the future and what really works in areas post-COVID recovery. And I'll be sharing those things as time goes on. It's just a lot to digest at this point. We also had our Sacramento area valley meeting for Secod, and it was very interesting. We went over a lot of budget, line items, and what we're going to be doing going forward. And, you know, just trying to figure out all these bills and federal funding, transportation funding, just how the allocation's going to work. We were still not 100%, but we're working and we're getting closer to a solution. I also am in the middle of doing the California League of Cities Lobby Day and their Board of Directors meeting that starts tomorrow, which is one of the reasons why I'm not there, because we're just running back and forth. But yesterday, we met with our Assembly Member, Ken Cooley, and we talked to him about finding some type of line item in the budget to help us afford the unfunded mandates that is our organic recycling. It's a burden on all the cities throughout the state. And we're asking, since we have such a surplus, that there's a consideration for us to have some funding to help us offset the cost, especially to our consumers and our constituents. We also talked about some housing bills that we oppose just because we haven't had enough time to deal with the ADUs and all the laws that have been implemented and changing over the last, you know, six to 18 months. And I don't, I'm not sure where we're going to land on that, but we did make the ask that we have a little bit more leeway. Cities know best about local control and how to manage what our revenue numbers and what we need to do to meet this housing crisis. And that is all I have for now. And next item, please.
The next item is public comment. And members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And Mayor, I have not received any speaker cards from the audience, and I am looking on Zoom, and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, next item.
The next item is consent calendar, items seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Daniels. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruins is absent. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Next item?
Next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is Citrus Heights Small Business COVID Recovery Grant Program update. And staff will make a presentation on the Small Business COVID Recovery Grant Program. Good evening, Mayor Middleton and members of city council. Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager for the City of Citrus Heights, here with my colleague, Bill Zanoni, Interim Administrative Services Director. If you'll give me a moment, we have a PowerPoint for you this evening.
So, good evening. I'm Bill Zanoni, Interim Administrative Services Director. Megan and I will tag team this presentation this evening. What we would like to do is give you a brief update on the COVID Small Business Recovery Grant Program that the council discussed at both of your meetings in January. So just as a reminder, the City of Citrus Heights was allocated about $15.6 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds. We received the first half of that funding, excuse me, $7.8 million in May of last year. We are scheduled to receive the second payment this month. We actually received an email from the U.S. Treasury last week. They're going in order of when the first funds were released because we were one of the first cities to get the first allocation. We were notified to submit our request. That was done last Thursday. So we anticipate receiving the second $7.8 million payment before the end of this month. As you will recall, the city council discussed shortly after receiving the first American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation, restoring staffing in the police department. So on June 24th of last year, the council appropriated $5.3 million to restore 22 vacant positions in the Citrus Heights Police Department. On January 27th of this year, after several discussions, the city council allocated an additional $320,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for a Small Business COVID Recovery Grant Program.
And Bill and I are here this evening to present this non-action item to provide city council a review of
to provide City Council a review of and result metrics with our Small Business COVID Recovery Grant Program. What you see on the screen here is a summary of eligibility requirements that a business must check off in order to qualify for our recovery grant program. It must be a commercial business licensed and located in Citrus Heights and operational as of March 1st, 2020. In operation at the time of submittal and with intention to remain open in Citrus Heights. Making sure that this program is targeted towards small business, there was a qualification that the business entity earned $3 million in annual revenue or less in the base calendar year of 2019 and experienced at least a 25% revenue loss in calendar year 2020 or 2021. If a business does qualify for recovery grants, these are the eligible expenses. You see a wide swath of uses available, including general business operations, payroll expenses, supplier payments, et cetera. Ineligible expenses would be anything outside of the scope related to COVID mitigation. These are the grant amounts that a business would be awarded if they qualify based on their base year annual revenue. You can see if a business earns between $1,000 and $100,000, they would receive a $2,000 grant. Between $100,000 and $1 million is a $10,000 grant. And $1 million and over, up to $3 million would be a $15,000 grant. So program administration, we heard from council, two big priorities, and they were important to staff as well. First was streamlined and expedited application process. And second was robust outreach efforts. And we are happy to report, we were able to deliver on both. In terms of the application process, both electronic and hard copy applications were available to ensure equitable access to the process in all key languages in our business community. Our staff was available via phone, in-person meeting, and virtual meetings to answer any questions and provide application triage. We also worked with the Sacramento Metro Business Center to provide triage support for additional applications, outreach and marketing to make sure our businesses know the program is available. Robust outreach efforts included promotion well in advance of program opening. That ramp up started about two weeks in advance to make sure businesses were notified and they have a runway to be able to prepare for that application. We also offered an informational webinar, both live and a recording available on the project webpage, that reviewed the application process as well as frequently asked questions. Press releases, e-news, and social media posts were all sprinkled throughout that go-live and application period to make sure our businesses know all about this resource that's available. Of course, announcements and reminders at public meetings as well as direct messaging and outreach to our businesses. So, results. The program was open February 24th to March 26th. The city received a total of 76 applications. Seven of those were duplicates, so a total of 69 applications were received. And after review for eligibility, based on those guidelines that we just reviewed, 33 businesses were ultimately eligible and received COVID recovery grants. In total, we provided a little over...
Thirty-three. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, $277,000 in grant funds. These payments were issued to those eligible businesses on April 25th. Everyone was notified in an expedient manner. And there are unexpended funds available for future consideration. So you can see a breakdown on the graph to the right, how it ranked in terms of the size of business and the size of COVID recovery grant administered. Nine $2,000 award grants, 20 $10,000 award grants, and 15, excuse me, four $15,000 grants. Antidoteally, this mix is really indicative about what we know of the size of our business community. 64% of our businesses have less than 10 employees and that tracks from a revenue perspective as well.
And if I might add, we did, when the applications came in, they were reviewed if there was missing information. We did follow up with the applicants to try and receive the information that was missing. We actually found through this process several businesses that submitted an application but did not have a business license. So we, we actually licensed several, several existing businesses through this process as well.
Facilitated some eligibility. Yes, yes, we did. I'm sure you won't hold that against us. So another way to look at this are the metrics you see here on the screen. Of those 69 applications, as we mentioned, there were 33 eligible businesses. 36 businesses were ineligible. And you can see, based on the reason categories at the bottom, it was overwhelmingly because they did not meet that revenue loss threshold of 25%. And as Bill mentioned, we did whatever we can, we could to help get them into guideline buckets. So those are the quantitative metrics of the program. We also have some really great qualitative metrics for you. What you see here on the screen is a snap of a thank you note from Ben Combs, owner of Judy's Cleaners, who received a Small Business COVID Recovery Grant, ultimately grateful for the assistance to continue his resilience through post-COVID and beyond. In terms of next steps, staff will continue the ARPA funding conversations with council at the May 26th City Council meeting. And what you saw during our strategic planning retreat is many exciting plans to continue standing up programs to support our Citrus Heights business community. So we're really excited to continue that conversation with you. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council?
Yeah, I'll start. I'm very excited about it all. It's very nice. I'm disappointed about the ineligible's definitely. And especially about the 22 who, who I believe it was 22 that were less than $25,000. Do we know, were many of them close to 25? Were they, the ones that weren't, were really just small losses?
Of those, if, if we were to drop the, the revenue loss requirement to, from 25% to 15%, we would have had, three of those businesses might have qualified. If we were to go down to 10%, there could be two additional ones of those that...
Okay, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, I just want to say thank you for standing the program up, especially as quickly as you did and efficiently and getting the word out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller.
I also have a comment, Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So again, excellent job, Megan and Bill. I think that hearing the, the number of businesses, that last statistic that you shared, it really showed me that, that it really covered the bases. Meaning we really hit the people that we were trying to help. We were really trying to, to, to get to the, to the right people. And I think the way the program was structured was well there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Megan, Bill, again, wonderful work. No, we're not going to hold it against you for making sure those who are, you know, out of compliance, bending over backwards to get them in compliance, because that's, that's the name of the game here. We want the businesses to recover in our community. And so thank you for, like everyone says, standing it up so quickly. I know that it was a push and as a council, I know we appreciate you doing that work and making sure all those factors were met, especially my, my hard line of, you know, multiple languages as many as you can get. So thank you again, both of you, for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton.
Okay, so, next item.
The next item is department reports, which we have none. So the next item is city manager items.
Okay, Mr. Feeny.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have a few items to give you some updates on tonight. But first, I want to recognize the great work the council and our staff team did that Vice Mayor Schaefer had some very kind comments about at the strategic planning retreat early this week that occurred on Tuesday, May 10. I agree with the comments that were said earlier. You know, terrific retreat, a lot of good work was done there. Very excited about the strategic objectives that were discussed and adopted as part of the retreat. And there will be an item on the May 26th City Council calendar that we, where we speak more about the strategic planning objectives that were adopted as part of the retreat and then also some longer-term objectives that we would like to talk to the council about that we had presented as part of that background memorandum. So a lot of exciting things at Headfirst Citrus Heights and I thought a lot of great work was done there by the council and the staff team too. So thank, thank you all for your efforts on that. Good retreat. So if we can go to the next slide, please. While we're talking about some, some good things that are coming down the pike here, we've got some great branding efforts that are going on. It's the 25th year that Citrus Heights is, it's an anniversary since incorporation. So this marks our 25-year anniversary this year. Our team has worked to put some banners together that acknowledge and recognize that great accomplishment. And you'll start to see some of those banners installed at various locations around the community, on some of the major roadways, and also in Fountain Square. And they'd say that these locations are distributed throughout the city. So residents throughout the city will be able to see this and reflect on it. It's definitely something that the community should be proud of. So you'll see that. And then also on our city council staff reports, memorandums, you'll see this logo used during the anniversary year. So wanted to let the council know about that and the community know about it as well. If we can go to the next slide, please. With the primary election, I wanted to let the council and the community know that there have been some ballot boxes that have been placed at City Hall. There's one inside the lobby and then there's another one just outside the, the doors of the lobby. Those ballot boxes are checked periodically by the county. At this time, they're about every 96 hours, they're checked and ballots are picked up as you get closer to the election. My understanding is, you know, the last 10 days of election, they pick that up. The frequency increases from 72 to as little as 24 hours. There's a total of four vote, by mail ballot drop-off locations within the city. The other locations are at the Rayleigh's on Lykan Drive, also at Rush Park Community Center and Sylvan Oaks Library, in addition to the two locations that we have here at City Hall. In addition to these drop box locations, that the Citrus Heights Community Center will be having a vote-in-person vote center that'll start as early as May 28th and will run through June 7th through Election Day. If we can go to the next slide, please. Hey, something else to be excited about for May, Citrus Heights Bike Month, or it's, May is Bike Month and we can call it Citrus Heights Bike Month, too. But there's definitely a few events that the city's working to help support those efforts of having biking in the community and promoting that. The Police Activities League is having a Bike Safety Day this coming Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00 at Rush Park. We also, Virginia spoke to the Citrus Heights Public Works Showcase earlier this evening. There's definitely going to be a Bike Brown opportunity to have a bike parking there and promoting biking to the event. Again, that's Thursday, May 19th from 2:00 to 6:00. And then on, on the, on Friday, May 20th, there's going to be a neighborhood pop-up ride at the Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail from 9:30 to 10:30. So it'll be, we're definitely looking to have some folks come out on whether, whether the biking would be terrific or even if they're looking to stride. You know, welcome all modes, so to speak, as long as it's people-powered at the Old Auburn Trail that day. And we will have some information about some of the city's trail efforts that are underway relative to Arcade, Cripple Creek, out on the trail that day as well. So to be able to answer questions for people that are on that trail. Let's see, and I don't, I think that concludes all my slides, but I want to make sure that we have something else that's exciting to announce. Our communications officer vacancy has been filled. And we have our new team member, Elijah Wilber, that is here with Megan Huber tonight. And I'd like, if Megan, if you could introduce Elijah, but he started on Monday of this week and we're very excited to have him here. So with that, Megan, if you would, do the honors of introducing Elijah to the council and the community, please.
Thank you, City Manager Feeny. I would be delighted to, good evening, Mayor Middleton and members of City Council. Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager. I am very excited to introduce you to our new communications officer. As council recalls, we recently restarted our strategic communications program about three years ago. And it's an integral part of the city's strategic goal to increase community vibrancy and pride. And we do that by building and utilizing our communications channels. And they've had great success so far in creating about 13 million media impressions annually and looking to grow that even more. So all that to say, this is a very important and integral position and we had to get it right. And I'm very excited to report, we absolutely did. I would like to introduce you to Communications Officer Elijah Wilber. And he'll say hello.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm honored to be here tonight and in front of you. This is a very exciting opportunity for me. I started my career in public service in, end of 2015, right when I turned 29 and ushered in my 30s into this career. And it's been a great privilege of mine. I started my career out, my career in public service in City of Roseville. And this has brought me here today to Citrus Heights. I am a resident of Citrus Heights for the last six years. I really love living here and have seen the great progress that Megan mentioned with the communications here. And it, it gets better every day and I'm really excited to be a part of that, to be able to see it as a resident and to be leading the charge on that. So thank you for this opportunity and I'm really excited to get to work with all of you.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you and welcome.
Welcome.
All right.
Mayor, I have a question. I have a question about the...
Absolutely.
Just Feeny, I can go back to the, to the biking event that you have going on? We'll roll this, the PowerPoint back to that. So I just want to clarify for folks that, what date is that pop-up happening between 9:30 and 10:30? What, what date is that?
That's May 20th.
That's May 20th.
The date on that.
Might have been blocked.
Yeah, so that'll, and that's there at the Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail.
Okay, all right, great.
So Fri- Friday, May 20th. Great way to get your Friday kicked off.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you get that on all of our calendars, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ash.
Yeah, we'll get all these events on the council calendar and hopefully it can work where we can see some council members out there. That would be terrific.
Thank you.
We'll see what we can do. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Just one real quick. Yeah, just one real quick. I noticed some youngsters in the back there. I was wondering, are you here for a school project? Can you come up to the mic and tell us who you are, where you're from, and why you're here? Come on, you gotta go up to...
If you're both here for school, yep.
Hi, I'm Haley Gambetti and I came for a school project. My teacher had wanted me to come to learn how to, for me to, like, speak up and get my points across to the city.
Excellent.
You're doing a great job.
Bella Vista.
Nice.
Very good.
Nice.
I'm Eric. I'm also Bella Vista. I drove her here. I also live in the City of Citrus Heights and I absolutely love this city.
Oh, great. Thanks. Thank you very much.
You picked a good meeting to come to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other items requested by members? Seeing some head shakes, no, we will adjourn.
Well done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you all and have a good night.
Good night.